Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our board study session today. So today, we're going to be talking about boundaries for the Three Rivers Elementary School and the reconfiguration of some of those boundaries of schools that will be affected by this. So, did you want to say anything or just turn it over to Dr. Susana Reyes?
Yes. So, just for a tiny bit of context before Dr. Reyes starts, tonight's study session will be on Three Rivers Elementary boundary recommendation. You'll get also an abbreviated, well, you'll get that whole presentation again in the board meeting. The other item we will be highlighting in the study session that we won't be in the board meeting is grain configuration update, just to give you an update where we are in that thinking and planning. I again want to acknowledge Dr. Reyes and our consultant, Mr. Montgomery, for their hard work in this effort, and I know that Susana will also be acknowledging some boundary committee members who are here tonight. So, just again, want to recognize the complex nature of this task and honor them for the thoughtful way in which they've approached it.
Great. Hi, everybody. Okay, so President Christensen, members of the board, and Superintendent Whitney will be focusing on a boundary recommendation today and include some discussion on the middle school process and next steps. This afternoon, we have some members of the boundary committee who have contributed to this effort, and not all are here, but I will ask them to stand as I say their name to be acknowledged. They've provided a ton of work, a lot of thoughtful feedback, and contributed, volunteered a lot of time through the course of several meetings on this process, and we continue the process. It's not done, so with today's portion of it, we're excited to share with you where we are. But we'll start with our transportation staff who is here this afternoon, Patricia Thomas and Bell Trump. And then we have Barbara Pierce, who has also participated in our committee meetings, and Kristi Grimm, who is one of our facilitators, but also, yes, yes, not a parent yet. And then Robin Hay, who's our planning principal for the elementary schools and principal at Frost, Diana Sisney, principal at Maya Angelou, Maria Sandoval, who has also participated in a meeting, and then, of course, our staff member, Raoul Sital, who through the process of staff discussions and meetings, also has contributed a lot to the process. Then we have Randy Nunnemaker, Executive Director of Capital Programs, Kristen Wren, who is doing her internship and has been participating in the process as well. And then, we also have Spencer Montgomery here, who's the project manager for JUB Engineers, and whose expertise and detailed analysis and partnership with his subsidiary company, Gateway Mapping, has provided us with a lot of the data that you will see and have seen during this process. So, just really want to acknowledge all of the support, the contribution, and the thoughtful work that has gone into this process and is going to be continuing as we move forward. Okay, so with that, just to provide a little bit of an update, earlier this month, is that where we are? Yes. Earlier this month, an update on the process was provided to you in a study session as well as a board report. It included information about the dual-language program and some of that conversation, and different approaches were discussed, such as a dual-language designated school, regional programming, and the expand and scale approach, providing services across the district in regard to dual-language learning. And what resulted from that discussion was, and the analysis of each of the approaches, was the district is going to be moving forward to develop a process for expanding dual-language learning across the district. And on January 14th, the bilingual task committee also unanimously offered a recommendation for the programming approach. And then later this week, our two-way dual-language teachers for Maya, Angelou, and McClintock Elementaries are going to be meeting to explore program models, approaches, and then identify priorities for program support. As you know, these are the guiding principles that have been developed for the process, and they've really been very helpful to us for testing various scenario ideas that have been considered. And just as a brief recap, you may recall, in May of 2018, the district launched a survey for parents, staff, and community, asking for input regarding the process and considerations for the revisions. We received approximately 650 responses, and I reached out to some of our other community members, and parent groups, and so forth. And additionally, you as a board provided your guidance and feedback and direction through a board study session, and that resulted in what you have here in front of you that serve as our guiding principles. So, moving right into the primary discussion point for this afternoon, this is Scenario B. And Scenario B, as it relates to what we'll be discussing today, will focus on Three Rivers Elementary and the expected schools that will be affected by the boundaries for this school. Those are Livingston Elementary, Mark, Twain, and McGee. And on the screen is draft Scenario B, which you have in front of you, and it was also what was shared at three community meetings, as well as online, and we requested feedback via an online form, and a feedback form that people completed at the community meetings. We also shared this with you in a previous study session. For your reference, the various shades of color represent the existing boundaries, and then the thick line, which is in color, in this case, it's an orange-yellow color, is the draft boundary line that we'll be looking at. You also will see that there's a key in the bottom left-hand corner of the map, so on your large printed version, you can also see what some of the other symbols mean. So, based on the analysis of student numbers data and then projected future growth that JUB Engineers completed for us, we modified the scenario slightly, and that became modified Scenario B, which is this one on the screen. And for this scenario, we moved M1, which is the, this little spot right there, I think you can see my cursor over that. It's about 27 students that currently are attending McGee, and we originally, in the original draft Scenario B, that group of students was going to remain at McGee. But in an effort to have them attend the school nearest to them, again, abiding by, adhering to, trying to align with our guiding principles of neighborhood schools, we placed them, we included them in the boundaries for Three Rivers Elementary. So that was one adjustment that was made to Scenario B, which became modified Scenario B. Another adjustment we made was that we moved L3, which is right here where I have the cursor going, I think you can see that there. That is about 97 students that, in looking into the future, we determined would have Three Rivers be over capacity, and so we kept them at Livingston Elementary. And so those went back to Livingston in this scenario. So those are the two differences between Scenario B, the one that was presented to the community, and this first version of modified Scenario B. Modified Scenario B point 2. So we asked the committee to provide us feedback on modified Scenario B, and through that process and further analysis, this modified Scenario B point 2 was what was rendered, and it included an additional modification, which added L10, which is where my cursor is, back into, it added that back into the Three Rivers, oh, wait, right here, the Three Rivers Elementary School. And that is about 35 students. So we felt like we could add that number of students back into the school and still maintain capacity for the expected future growth. So looking at Scenario B and the numbers for Scenario B compared to each of the modified scenarios is what we have for you for the tables, that you have also hard copy in front of you, so you can kind of lay them out and look at them all at once, and we'll go through them briefly here, one by one. So this is the data table for Scenario B and modified Scenario B. The building capacity data is in the third column, and it reflects the methodology approved by the board, which takes into account the K3 class size reduction factor, as well as JUB Engineers enrollment forecast calculation that includes a migration factor. Moving over to the right, you see 2019 is the total estimated students, K6. Right underneath that, you'll see Three Rivers in parentheses that shows it at K5. So the plan is to open Three Rivers Elementary in 2019 as a K5 school, but we will provide for sixth-grade sections should parents of next-year sixth graders wish to have their sixth graders attend Three Rivers and then move again the following fall as seventh graders into middle school. But we'd like to open it at a K5 in an effort to try to reduce some of the transitions for students who may be very happy where they are right now and want to finish out their sixth-grade year at their existing elementary school. The other schools, Livingston, McGee, and Twain, their numbers reflect a K6 configuration because we won't be moving to K5, 6, 8 until 2020. In 2020, you see the total estimated students, K5, for all of the schools, and the green column, Scenario B, shows what we would expect with that scenario, and then what we would expect with modified Scenario B. And you can compare that far-right column, modified Scenario B, with the building capacity, brick and mortar, the third column over, so you can kind of see what that looks like and what those scenarios do to the capacities. This is a data table for Scenario B and modified Scenario B point 2. So you'll see what the, moving the students from L10 to Three Rivers Elementary, it reduced Livingston from what was, I believe, 554 to 519. So it gets, it reduces that overcrowding a bit more, and while still allowing for what we expect to be additional students enrolling in Three Rivers because of the future building that we're accounting for. And you can see the rest of the numbers there. So this is modified Scenario B up against modified Scenario B point 2. Just another way to look at the numbers. So given all of that and the work that we've done in analyzing the numbers and taking into account all of the guiding principles, as well as what we expect to see in future growth, we are recommending modified Scenario B point 2 for the Three Rivers Elementary boundary. It does align nicely with the guiding principles that include those listed on this screen. Of course, neighborhood schools being the primary one, as we all know, but then again, also long-term solutions, considering transportation, minimizing impact to students, and reducing overcrowding. The, ooh, oh goodness, it's Siri's listening to me. She's looking up transportation for me. That's weird. It's like I wasn't even touching it. Anyway, I think I'd like to emphasize a little bit with regard to the K5, 6, 8 point that I made earlier in minimizing impact to students to the extent possible. You know, we want to make sure that parents have the option to have, keep their sixth-grade students at the school where they currently are, but at the same time, they may wish to go ahead and have them transition twice, and so we are planning on ensuring that we find ways to accommodate those requests and open up sixth-grade sections at Three Rivers Elementary in 2019. So that's the recommendation. And before we go into discussion, if you would just allow me to introduce additional committee members who've arrived since we began, I just want to make sure we acknowledge their contribution and really thank them for being here this afternoon. So we have Heather Kubalik, who's one of our parents and who's been really instrumental in the conversation in a lot of different ways. We have Jaime Morales, our principal from McClintock. We have Carla Lobos, who is here, who has been participating in the conversation around dual language and some of the programming pieces there, and who continues in that conversation with us. And I think, I don't see anybody else who has arrived, so just wanted to make sure we acknowledged your hard work and thank you for contributing. So, discussion time.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Reyes. Do we have any questions, comments by board members?
I had a couple, I had a couple questions. The first one is, are the numbers on the maps that we got based on what we would see in 2020, 2019, or today, the student numbers?
2020.
Those are the 2020 numbers. We haven't changed those over time. That's what we show to the public, and so we've just been consistent with that. In most cases, it's going to be very similar for 2019, except in those neighborhoods that have long growth going on.
So it's based on a K through 5 model?
Yes.
The sixth graders are not included?
Correct. Those are K through 5 in 2020.
Okay.
So there's a few neighborhoods that would have a larger number than that between, excuse me, difference between 2019 and 2020.
And then, for large programs like the Spectrum program, do we have an estimate on what percentage of students don't come from that home boundary? And we believe that our estimate is conservative in looking at that. What percentage of the students at Livingston in the Spectrum program come from outside the home boundary right now?
We have that, and it's included in the migration.
Yeah, I don't know the specific number.
It's a pretty good-sized number, I would imagine.
It is. And I don't know the percentage of that, but it's, what I can tell you is that when we started all this and tried to figure out the migration, it's built into that factor, the percentage that lives within the Livingston boundary that's part of the Spectrum program. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
So I just had a friend phone in from the audience who told me about 30% of the students in the Spectrum program come from outside of the boundary?
So what, I mean, just to check the numbers, I did a quick look at what we have in the B2 scenario, and I calculate 510 students in here from 2020 in this area. And if we look at Spectrum and say there's 25 kids per class, that's sixth grades, that's 150 kids, and if 70% of them are coming from outside, that's another, excuse me, 100 and some, 105 students coming from outside. So I would question, do we really only have 525 estimated for that year, or is it over 600? It seems like our factors either low, or the numbers on this sheet don't represent And you guys can get back to me. I just, it looks a little, there's some questions there.
So I think what you're telling us, Mr. Montgomery, is that these sheets here take into account not only the students that will be living within the boundary at that time that will be attending that school, but also people who will be coming from outside that boundary, whether to the Spectrum program or some other program. Is that, is that what you?
That's correct, and based on current migration patterns.
Right.
And quite honestly, I remember, as we've done some of the work the last few months for you, some of the migration, for example, because we've talked about McClintock quite a bit, I would have expected a much higher in-migration to McClintock, but when I look at the numbers, it wasn't as high as I expected, and I think Livingston's the same case. And I don't know that I can explain that. I just know what the total net is based upon all of the movement between, because a lot of the kids may be going with a parent that teaches somewhere else and whatever.
Might be going to one of our dual-language programs.
If this adds up in Scenario B2 on the map to 510, and this number on our sheet is 519, that's saying the total in-migrations in students, we might have gained 100 and some in the Spectrum, but we sent 100 and some out to other programs.
Well, I don't think, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but 30% is Spectrum?
30% is the number of, so the whole number of students in Spectrum, about 30% of those students come in from other schools.
Okay, so it's not 30% of the whole population?
But it's just whatever, so if it's 100 kids in Spectrum, about 30 come, and 70 are Livingston.
Yeah.
And so that's the point. If I add up 500 on here, I would expect 150 coming in for Spectrum.
Correct.
No?
Of 500 students, how many are in Spectrum? Pick a number.
150.
All right, so 30% of 150, about 45 students are coming in. It's 30% of the Spectrum students migrate into those boundaries.
So 70% of the Spectrum students are from within the Livingston boundary?
Yeah. Okay.
But they are from the current Livingston boundaries, and this is going to change that pretty drastically. So, does that account for those students too?
So it would be even less.
I think our concern is, the most overcrowded school right now is Livingston. And from what I can tell, there's probably not a lot of growth in those areas, but there is some growth still, and we are just concerned that we're going to have these several schools under capacity, and Livingston, 100 and maybe more students over capacity.
By overcapacity, you mean over the brick and mortar capacity?
Yes.
Right.
Because that's a goal as our board, we want to get rid of all portables, and that's, we worry that that's going to happen here in this scenario.
So yeah, if we go back to that sheet, the B2 scenario, that's exactly a concern I have, is that we're saying that on day one, in 2020, it's okay at Livingston to be 25% over our brick and mortar capacity, whereas at the other schools, not McGee, but Three Rivers and Twain, we're looking at 10%-ish under capacity. There's no real, I understand that we don't want to be over a capacity at Three Rivers, but to me, there's schools that have been living with portables for many, many years, and those are the schools that we are going to move the portables out of, and if there's growth up north, and we start out at day one at capacity, we start moving the portables up, and when we get crowded, we talk as a community and decide at what point it's time to build a bond, but to me, I guess, as one board member, it's not acceptable to say it's okay to start still at 25% over capacity to keep a new school. And I am also thinking about, you look at Mark Twain, and Barbara has, I'm just talking about Twain and Livingston here, the difference between those and new schools. You have a lunchroom where it's a portable, and they have PE, because they have PE all day in their lunchroom. It's harder to put kids, you're not doing that anymore.
No, we have a separate gym, and now that portable is our cafeteria.
Yeah. So you have a portable where you're serving lunch, and I'm saying that what was originally designated as your cafeteria slash gym is now a gym all day, whereas at new schools, we have a lot more gym space, we have a lot more lunchroom space, sometimes we have dedicated music rooms. At Livingston, I see them practicing music right now in, you know, what's designated as their cafeterias. So I just believe at new schools, we have more capacity outside of the brick and mortar classrooms to handle additional students over, and so if we're going to start on day one, I believe we can still start on day one at capacity at all these schools by moving one or two of these blocks around, and for me, that would be a priority, and probably for others, some other community, a lot of other community members as well.
You know, I really like where Three Rivers stands, because I just drove by there today, purposely, because I wanted to see that school, and I cannot believe how fast the houses are going up around, I mean, right around that school, and there's so much area there for more growth. So I think it's important that we do under, that we do open Three Rivers under capacity, because it won't take very long for it to reach capacity, and we don't want to put in portables. But Scott was right, Twain is going to be about 60 students under capacity. I was looking at this Scenario B point 2. Are you recommending Scenario?
B point 2.
Okay. So the Scenario B point 2, there's this one little section that has almost exactly 60 students. Is that community between the T1A and the T1B, is it really part of the same? Is that why we're not wanting to keep that? Because that would actually keep those kids from moving schools as well. But are those two tied together really well? Do you know where I'm talking?
Yeah, T1, T1B and T1A.
So this little area right here, this is originally all Twain, and this little area has 60 students, and this one has about 110 or something like that. And if we left this in there, it would be Twain at capacity where there's not a lot of growth, and then it would alleviate the overcrowding at Livingston, and it would open at capacity. But sometimes, these communities are really tight, because they really flow together, and I think we need to take that into account.
I'm going to guess that somebody else here knows how closely with those two neighborhoods.
Pretty sure those are two apartment complexes.
It's Chapel Hill.
Chapel Hill.
Yeah, and the crossing.
So are there apartments, I know they're building down there in that right little triangle there, but I don't.
So I'm guessing there's a reason, though. Do you guys have a reason why we didn't move those 60 over so that we opened both those schools at capacity? Because I think Twain and Livingston both won't have a lot of growth. They're going to all have a little. Everywhere I go in Pasco, any open lot, there's growth, but there's not as much potential for growth in those two areas. Is there a reason we didn't split that up? Are we worried about splitting those two apartment complexes up? Was there, I was just?
Originally, based upon the numbering system, we had them together, and it was over 200, and so we thought, well, we should get a feel for how much is in there, and that's why we split it.
Okay.
Not necessarily to say that they should go one way or the other, but just so that we'd have a better feel, because that was, over 200 kids in one neighborhood is a pretty large neighborhood, right?
So just looking at that, I mean, Argent is a good natural boundary, those, there's a canal there between, well, I guess technically, those homes on the north side of Argent figure into that block up there, but, I mean, I'm sure you divided that along that what appears to be a natural boundary anyway, but.
Right.
I mean, certainly, we could look at that, moving those few students, there is not, I know there's still lots in there, so that area is probably one of the few areas in the Twain boundaries that's still growing. I don't, are there other areas, Mrs. Pierce, do you know, that are developing within Twain's boundaries?
So I think there were two conversations that we had. One was potential for growth, and the other was program availability, because if we were going to expand a two-way dual-language or a bilingual program, Twain was considering an option for such a program, which we passed through.
Okay.
But I think we are, we're not doing the regional dual-language now. I think we're doing the scaled at every school.
The other thing, and what we looked at, it wasn't a natural barrier in those neighborhoods, so keeping them together makes more sense. And if you're trying to split them.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, just looking at it from that little triangle there, the big triangle north of Argent just seems to be a nice community area, but I think, as Mr. Montgomery said, you include that block together, that's a block of over 200, so you put that little divide in there. So you put that little divide in there.
But you could, you could move them back to Mark Twain, and then move instead of Road 68, you can move the lower portion over. But those neighborhoods are just so unpopulated that it's not going to be even. The numbers probably wouldn't work, but you could try it.
Well, I know in addition, long term, I know there's been a conversation about the facility planning, at what time we begin the discussion of replacing Livingston. And so if that's something that's going to be looked at in the future, it certainly would happen before replacing Twain. Therefore, to have the capacity to build a school there that's larger in order to accommodate and still over time eliminate those portables. Maybe not as many in the middle.
So I guess, can, can we go back to the scenario B two numbers? Just another point here is, if we say that it's okay to be 25% over capacity in 2020 at Livingston, in order for Three Rivers to be 20% over capacity, you'd have to be at 825 students, and we're going to be at 583. There's just a lot of, there's a lot of growth. How, how fast do we believe that the Three Rivers boundary as set would grow per year? Do we have an estimate?
So if you look at that block right there, so look at, look, on your map, look at L five and L eight.
Two, maybe three?
Two or three what?
Years.
Could grow 300 students?
Well, no, not 300. There, last Friday, we, we received some information on the new forecast that's being done by the demographer, right? And which updated the, the rate at which housing is currently producing students. Okay, so, so we looked at that. What, what does that change for what we've done here? And long story short is, the, the neighborhoods that we're showing in modified scenario B two that are experiencing growth, new housing development, would add approximately, what do you say, 122 more students over the course of 2021, 2022. So it would, it would be, and I, I think that that would come relatively quickly. Somebody else made a comment that they're, they're going really fast. So.
We, I mean, my neighborhood score, well, I guess it's not neighborhood, it's 17 miles away, but the school my children are in, the district of, I think we went up like 200 students in three years. It was amazing, or close to that. So once they start building and families start moving in, it happens fast. It happens really fast. So I, I feel comfortable with leaving Three Rivers at that capacity, because I don't want to get to a point where we have to start putting in portables.
Or, or moving portables, right?
Or moving students.
And moving portables is expensive, moving students is expensive. I think we need to allow more room in the place where the growth is the very most. You know, to me, with Livingston, opening at, you know, almost 100 over capacity, I mean, that's my biggest current concern with this. I know they have lots of portables. And, and I also know that though Spectrum might be the biggest extra program they have, it's not the only extra program they have. So, anyway, but, but I am concerned with, I mean, to me, this says, you know what, though, if we build another school in the next five years or 10 years or whatever, we have, that would take care of the last of our portables at Livingston. I would rather leave kids in portables that already exist than have to add them, because the expense, we've already incurred the expense of the schools that they already exist. We have not at the, at the addition. And, and so I guess we need that long-term facility plan that would be very helpful to making this decision. Because if Livingston is on, in the fairly, you know, fairly soon future, then, then this would make sense.
The number of students over, just to kind of give you a sense, we have currently have 17 classrooms in portables. And the number of students over would reduce that to four portable classrooms.
At Livingston, is that what you're talking about? 17 classrooms at Livingston?
So we go from 17 to four. So we would reduce over, you know, overcrowding, but yes, they would be in portables. And the other schools would not have the need for them.
But this would not satisfy the goals of the board to get rid of all portables in the district unless we are, so.
Right, and, and when we look at the guiding principles, we looked at them kind of in totality, and so, which included reducing overcrowding overall. But taking away all the portables wasn't an actual specific guiding principle, so we didn't work from that angle completely.
Yeah, I, I think that's reasonable. I think the reducing portables is a longer-term goal. And certainly we want to, and that was my question, do we, have we looked at what we're going to do with those 13 portables or whatever the number is that we're going to eliminate from, from Livingston?
We have not yet, but we'll certainly develop a plan based on the ongoing process of boundary revisions and what comes from that, because we still have, you know, additional work to do, and then other needs that may come up. I know that there's discussions.
So, so I want to have a discussion on portables, because I think this is critical that we do that. Before we get there though, is there anything, anybody have any comments on this?
Yeah, so another comment I had, so, and I agree with Mr. Laraman's sentiment that, you know, if there was a way to kind of get Livingston a little bit smaller, because I, I don't think anyone feels like, no, it's not okay that we open at 25% over brick and mortar capacity. So I certainly am not saying that. But another way to look at it is, we just decreased their school by 300 students, and that's going to provide a huge relief to their shared cafeteria gym space. And again, not ideal, but, but it's a huge improvement. So kind of depending on what lens we want to look at that. But I agree, if there was a simple way to make that even less, that would be wonderful. Maybe, are there other programs at Livingston? We have the Bridges, is that still there?
The Bridges program, the Spectrum program, I don't know if they.
How many students, the Bridges doesn't really have that many students though. Is it like 20 or 30?
Probably not quite that many.
Yeah, maybe 15 or something. Yeah, it's not a huge program, but, so, and we can get to the, but I saw that, changing the way we look at that, I think helps a little bit. I think that they'll be thrilled to have 300 less students in their cafeteria, in their gym, in their music space. And, and in talking to the people at that school over the last couple of years, they definitely have in their mind that someday they hope that maybe that school will be rebuilt. It'll be bigger, like the rest of our other newer schools in the last 10 or 15 years. I'm just going to throw in right, since I brought, since the portable, and we can talk about this more, but an outside-the-box thinking that, that could decrease all of these numbers a little bit would be as if we, if we repurpose some of those portables to a homeschool partnership, that would draw some students away from the schools that would prefer to have that model that we don't currently offer. Now, some people in our district actually travel to Richland or Kennewick to do that. But we have some that are not willing, or, or that would rather not do that, so they're staying in their homeschool, neighborhood school right now. But if they had the choice locally, they may pull out. And so that would be a way that we could reduce maybe that Livingston number even further by using some of those portables to have a homeschool partnership. I think that's one of the areas where we'd have high interest in that, in those boundaries. And those students do not participate in the, in the shared space areas typically. If we follow models of other districts where they come for workshops or something for a couple hours, they wouldn't necessarily be there all day. They could start and end at different times, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't cross over at the same time as the Livingston, McLaughlin, Chihuahua. It could literally be at a much different time, and they wouldn't use the shared space. So that's one way we could decrease that number further, I think, if we were to look at that as a use of those portables, some of the portables.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I think we've had lots of discussion on this. So you look at the number, the, the building capacity of 2042, and then you look at the number of enrollment at, you know, 2007. Wow, we should be able to divide those up nice and pretty and have 100% capacity in every school in the beginning of 2020. But we all know that within two years, that would be out of whack again. So, and I think this takes into account where we expect the growth. And yes, we will open that new school at under capacity, but if you look at where it's, where it's built, and what's in its boundaries, and what's going on there, that it will be, it will be full before too long. And I, so I know Mrs. Phillips has pointed out that little corner that we could move back to Twain, and it might balance that out a little bit. I, I like Mr. Morales's comment. I agree, eventually, we're going to replace Livingston. And as Mr., Dr. Richardson pointed out, it is opening quite a bit less than what it is now. That's not ideal, but, but I think it will be, I, I think given these boundaries and what's, what we expect to happen in the future, I think this is about as good as we're going to get. So I like this option. As far as portables go, are we ready to have that discussion? Here's my concern. We saw this when we opened the middle schools, as we, or when we moved sixth grade back to the elementary school. We, we didn't move portables off of there initially. Right or wrong, that's the way, that's the way it happened. And my concern is if we don't do something with these portables, they will become utilized and part of the program, and then hard to move out. And, and I don't, you know. So I, I think we've got to make sure that we plan for that. Not just leave them there expecting that someday we'll use them again. But that, that concerns me. I don't know what we're going to do with them. Don't know if there's a market for them, if there's a place for them, as Dr. Richardson pointed out. But I just, I do worry that if we leave them on site, they'll be utilized. My other concern is this. We have that brick and mortar capacity up there, and I'm pretty sure, we've got 529 for Twain. I am pretty sure that if, that if there was only 470 students there, that, that they might still need some portables, just because the way the program is structured. So I, I want to, I want us to be conscious of that. If that truly is not the capacity, if we need portables, then we need to adjust that capacity number, not just say that this is the capacity, and so, so we're always over capacity. If we need to fix that capacity number so that it reflects what we're doing, then, then let's do that. But, but I worry that, that we're going to have that as a capacity. We're going to open under capacity, and we're going to say, hmm, we just can't live without portables. So I, I think there's some things there that we've got to be conscious of as we move forward. Any other thoughts?
I'm worried that Three Rivers, we're going to be adding portables in three or four years at Three Rivers. But, but no, I think, I think this was a hard job. It's not an easy way to divide these schools. And I think you guys have done a really great job, a thoughtful job. It sounds like you've had some of the same questions we have, and have explored those possibilities, and, and come to the conclusion that B two is the best under the current circumstances.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ms. Phillips. I, you know, if you look back at the process, and we, we just got in, the board received an email, I think, yesterday or yesterday, kind of, which I appreciated. Essentially, at this point, lots of input has been sought. I mean, Dr. Reyes went through the timeline a little bit. There's been extensive involvement, you know, and at some point, we have to make decisions that are hard. And, and again, there's, there's going to be some disappointment. But I think approaching it from making as many people, from a positive way, making as many people happy and, and the best situation for as many students and families and staff as, as possible, is the desirable outcome. And I think we're pretty darn close to doing that, based on all the circumstances. No, it's still not ideal. We're still overcrowding is one of our biggest issues in our district, all over our district, no matter how we move grades, and it's just, we don't have enough facilities. So it's not going to be something that's an easy, quick fix. We're not going to be able to just eliminate portables. In a couple of years, we're talking a long-term, 10 to 20-year. Part of the master facilities plan is that that's kind of the goal. So, but it shouldn't be the overriding, like Dr. Reyes said, it's not the overriding determining factor in deciding boundaries this year, since we still have roughly 200 portables, I believe.
Okay. Are we, is there anything else?
Oh, yes, there is.
All right.
Wait, there's more.
Right, so.
Can I ask the board a question while you go there?
So, what more do we have? Is this?
I do have a, a follow-up to the middle school discussion and, and the rest of the boundary work to go through with you, and then.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right. So, so we've got lots of time for portables. If you can hold that, we'll, we'll get through the rest of this, and then we'll come back.
Okay, all right. So we've concluded then the discussion portion around the recommendation. And so we'll move right into our next steps. So the, the boundary committee will reconvene to continue the work around Columbia River Elementary boundaries. We'll continue to engage stakeholders, provide updates to you, and then hopefully bring a recommendation to you that at some point in March, hopefully, will have you take action on for Columbia River Elementary. So that's where we are for, for that one. And then moving into the middle school discussion. With the plan to have a grade configuration of 6th through 8th grade at the middle school level beginning in 2020, we wanted to share with you what our total capacity available looks like compared to what we estimate as our enrollment of students in 2020, 6th through 8th grade. The capacity information on this slide does include portable capacity at Ochoa Middle School and McLaughlin Middle School. So the, the committee is going to continue their work to further refine the draft scenarios that were presented to the community earlier this, this school year in November. And we'll continue to work on that and bring back some modified versions of those for your consideration and so forth, with the plan to look at it as a 6th to 8th grade configuration. So that's the plan for, for, in that regard. So again, next steps for, for that is the, the boundary committee working together on boundaries for middle school based on 6th to 8th grade configuration, engaging our community stakeholders, staff, and so forth, providing updates. And then tentatively, we're looking up, bringing to you a recommendation later this spring. And that's where we are.
Okay. Any questions from the board members? Student reps, any input? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Reyes. We'll look forward to that. And we are, are we taking action tonight on this?
No, so this evening, I'll present an abbreviated version of just the recommendation as a board report. And I will share with you at that point that our intention is to bring it back to you February 12th for action.
For action next, next board meeting?
Right.
Okay, very good.
So just, just for the board's awareness, we did go outside of our normal communication process and communicate to the public that this report would be, be being delivered tonight. So you may have community members who want to come and public comment. And the, the communication via social media website, et cetera, was to that, to that end, so that the community was aware that the report was being given during the board meeting, and that there would be an opportunity for them to comment.
Okay. So is there anybody here tonight wishing to comment before we get to the board meeting?
I have a question.
Mrs. Graham.
So with the portables, could you use them as dedicated specialist spaces in the elementary school to get your teachers off carts? And get the classrooms, you know, if they had a music space, band space, art, computers? Instead of, I mean, you would have to shuffle some probably, but I know there's a lot of teachers on carts that would appreciate not having to be on a cart. And that might be a way, but I was wondering if it counts towards your brick and, your capacity numbers? That would be the only wrinkle, I would think.
So, so I think to the, so again, gets back to our formula of capacity. If our formula for capacity is not accurate, if we truly have to have portables there for the capacity that we say we have at those schools, then we probably need to revisit our capacity numbers.
We, when we, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you know this, the, the district staff might know this better than I do. But we, we've taken a lot of pains to get to these brick and mortar capacity. And one of them was to have no teachers on, on carts. So there should be.
So there should be a designated music space. There should be a designated art space with that brick and mortar capacity. And, and I'm guessing that those portables, when, when it's over capacity, then those portables are going to be used so that we do not have teachers on carts. Teachers on carts isn't ideal for our students and it's not ideal for our teachers. And so from what I remember, that was already taken into account. Those numbers are with those designated spaces. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. So the capacity calculation methodology that we're using is based on the design of the school, which includes spaces for special classes like music and art and so forth. The way that the existing school was designed, and it includes the K three class size reduction figure, as well as a scheduling factor to allow for that as well at the elementary level. So in an ideal world and in theory, we should be able to, within the brick and mortar school, if we're at capacity or under, with those numbers, we should be able to have spaces for our specialists to provide their, their instruction to children.
So, so the one case right now, the, the best case for this that we have right now in our district is Curie. We have no portables at Curie. I don't know what our capacity number is for Curie.
750.
Is it 750, our brick and mortar capacity number?
839.
839? Okay. So there must be some, yeah, but.
Teachers on carts, but band and orchestra are something that aren't always calculated because there is a music room, but you can't have music going, band and orchestra going all at the same time.
Right.
So then those become.
Yeah. So this is where, again, we haven't perfected the formula, I, I don't think. And I'm not sure we'll ever perfect it, but these are the types of things that we're trying to identify. The challenge we have, I mean, it's a balance, right? So if, if we've got portables there, it's, gosh, why are we going to take those off? Because we need one for art and we could use another one for band and we could use another one for this program and for that program. And pretty soon, we've got a city of portables out there again, not because we need them, but because it's just, why would we haul them off? Because they're already here. And that's, I think that's where we've got to, we've got to be smart about how we do this. Portables cost money, they take up space, we have to maintain them, we have to provide heating and cooling there, so there's an expense there. And if we're just doing it for convenience, that's, that's something we have to be very careful of. So I would like to think that we're going to look at all of these and make, do what's best for our students and our community, but, but it is going to be a bit of a balance. Is there anybody else? Now's your, Mrs. Cabalik.
I just want to comment, looking forward as we continue to do boundary revision, Mr. Laraman talked a lot about some schools are under capacity, some we're looking at over capacity. And just as a parent representative on the boundary committee and talking to other parents and what they wanted, you know, no one wants their kids in portables, but more than that, parents want their kids at the school closest to them and they don't want their neighborhood divided up. So when we're doing this, we're trying to get those numbers as close to capacity as we can, but still keeping kids at the school closest to them and keeping those neighbors together. And you guess, you can't do all three at the same time. So just keeping that in mind as we do more of these boundary changes, that we're trying to make, meet all the needs, but what most parents are telling us is just get us to the school closest to us. So, that's it.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. And I, I've heard similar things. Honestly, some, a lot of people don't feel portables that bad. I even had teachers and some families, they prefer the portable for a number of reasons. If you go to McLaughlin, some of the teachers, they volunteer to go to portable because it allows them to have easy access to outdoor space for certain lessons and projects and brain breaks, whatever you want to call it. And so, again, I, I'm all in favor of having all brick and mortar buildings, but I agree with Ms. Cabalik that people would much rather be in a portable than have to travel a long, large distance or be divided, have their neighborhood split in half, or the people they go to church and play baseball with are now at another school. So I, I think the, the committee did a great job of doing that.
And having a dual language program at each and every school is worth, you know, taking that into account and building boundaries. So I think you guys did a great job. Thanks for answering all of our questions, too.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. And thank you, boundary committee, for your service and coming tonight and making this presentation.
Thank you.
We'll be back at 6:30 for the board meeting.